...those to these children as well as their families for their effort, determination, and resilience in the face of such obstacles. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Rick Danner and Greer City Council, I do proclaim May 14th, 2024, a President Awareness Day in the city of Greer. Do you want to say something about this?
Um, I did this not only for myself, but for people like my brother. My brother has speech pachyia, which people usually explain as someone who's had stroke, stroke victims are able to talk and they are able to communicate with others. And he wasn't able to do that until around the age of three. Most infants are able to talk around the age of one or two. He was introduced to speech pachyia at the age of three, didn't begin to say long and dead. So I did this not only for me, not only for Cam, but for everyone around us who suffers with speech pachyia or amniopaxia. With my platform going through the South Carolina team, its discover capabilities inspire opportunities. I'm educating not only the community of Greer, but the state of South Carolina about special needs and where it is in the world. And this is the starting point. Thank you.
Want to ask Betsy Potter and David Langley to come up, please? Okay, and Cameron Gilstrap, welcome. I get to read you all. On behalf of Mayor Rick Danner and Greer City Council, we want to recognize National Historic Preservation Month in the city of Greer. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as Historic Preservation Month in 1973, as a way to promote historic places for the purpose of instilling nation and community pride, promoting heritage tourism, and showing the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. And whereas Historic Preservation Month can instill awareness of the local historically significant buildings and landmarks to the residents of Greer and surrounding communities. And whereas Historic Preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas the city of Greer contains six individual properties on the National Register of Historic Places, as well as one historic district comprised of 17 properties in downtown Greer. And whereas the city of Greer continues to demonstrate its commitment to preservation as it grows and develops, the protection of its resources, both built and natural, and the recognition of rehabilitation and restoration of historic properties as overseen by the Board of Architectural Review. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Rick Danner and the Greer City Council, I do proclaim the month of May as National Historic Preservation Month in Greer, and call upon our residents to join others across the nation in recognizing and participating in this special observance. By the hand.
As Chair of the Board of Architectural Review for the city of Greer, we are very excited about our next chapter in promoting historic preservation in the city. McFortune.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your effort and what you do for us. Yep. Next, we will have a presentation, Pilot Watershed Study Update with, I'm not sure who, you?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Proten and the council. Glad to be here this evening. About a year ago, we contracted with WK Dixon to do our very first or pilot watershed study in Greer with a multitude of goals, but a couple of primary goals were, one, we want to know the condition of our system, and two, where it's physically located and get it in our GIS for maintenance purposes. And there's a variety of other things we're going, we were attempting to learn, and we learned, and I don't want to steal their thunder, so I'm just going to have Earl and Lisa introduce themselves and just give you an update on what we learned during this study.
Thanks, Steve. So I appreciate you guys' time this evening. My name's Earl Bingham. I'm engineer manager with WK Dixon out of our Columbia office. I've got Lisa Wells here, who's in our Greenville office. She's the head of our watershed services group. And I think Brian Thomas is listed. He wasn't able to be here, but as Steve mentioned, we started this process, started this process roughly 18 months ago. I was here kind of talking about what we were going to do at that point. And really, Steve has been invaluable in helping us to get to know how you guys operate, what some of the challenges are with stormwater in the city. And yeah, his group's been great. So, you know, with that, I just want to review kind of what we, what our goals were going into this, what we found, and some of the outcomes from that, and some of the next steps. So the goals we had, as Steve mentioned, one of the big ones was condition assessment, understanding where there may be failing infrastructure, or maybe just things that are getting blocked up, or need to be an eye kept on, which of course contribute to flooding. So one of the other goals with this was addressing flooding, both from the stream, and you can see here on the right, the kind of boundary of the watershed, that's, you know, kind of a, the, you know, southwest corner of Greer there, or the central portion kind of centered on Century Park. And the main water body in there is a tributary of Maple Creek. It feeds into the main portion of Maple Creek to the south, which then flows down to the Tiger River. So within that watershed, we also wanted to upgrade the mapping or the inventory, so go and see what assets are out there, what structures, what pipes. And also, because this was the pilot, we wanted to establish procedures that could guide Greer, could guide Steve, and also anyone else who would come in, and how to do this study, how to make sure you're getting a consistent product if you study other areas. And also to kind of capture some lessons learned, because not every, this stuff isn't one size fits all. Each community has its own challenges, its own things that are going on there. So to address those, those goals, we had a process that we went through. We started with a survey and a detailed stream walk. So we had folks walk close to six miles of stream within that, and actually go down the channel, take pictures, see where erosion is happening. Had folks go out to approximately 500 stormwater structures, take measurements, take photos, look at any condition, things they could see from the surface or looking down in that, in those structures. That information was captured and used to update the mapping in those areas. That information was also fed into hydraulic modeling, so that helps us understand where the constrictions in the system, whether it's in the pipes, whether it's in the channels or in the stream, where those things exist, and also helped us look at some potential solutions to where flooding is occurring. And we also received feedback from the public, from staff, on where they had seen issues before. So that's kind of a way of ground truthing that what we're seeing conceptually, and just as a, in theory, is matching up with where people actually have seen problems. There was also a criticality assessment done. So that's looking at the likelihood and consequence of a given pipe or structure failing. So a way to think about this is, if you have a big pipe under a major road, that's more critical than a little pipe that's just in somebody's backyard. Doesn't mean that little pipe doesn't have an impact, it does. And that person might, that might be super important to that citizen, but if you have something go out under a road, that can impact emergency operations, it could impact, you know, God forbid, you have a huge flood, people's ability to evacuate their homes or get out. So it's trying to kind of prioritize where you would go and where you would do either upgrades or further assessment. And then, like I said, we wanted to identify from those, the results of the modeling, the results of the criticality, some improvement opportunities. And, and these improvement opportunities are high level, conceptual. It doesn't mean that you can just take it and build it that way today, but it's, it's an idea on how you would address some of the more critical areas in, in this watershed. So the results is kind of, you know, what do you get from this process? What came out of it? So first of all, like I said, we had an updated stormwater map for this watershed, and that information's been incorporated with the GIS of the city and is being, you know, has been a benefit in updating how things are connected. And, you know, that helps if somebody, if citizen calls with a complaint, you know, that helps you know where things are located. As that inventory information was being collected, over 80 maintenance locations or issues were identified. These were individual structures where it could be just they have dirt and debris clogging them up, and, you know, nothing's getting in there because of that. It might be a situation where the lid's fallen in, and it's cracking, and, you know, that's a public safety hazard. Or sometimes just, you know, it's a manhole and the lid's gone off it. And those are things that were noted as, as we went through. And that information's already been provided to Steve and his group, and they've already begun efforts to, to address those things, because a lot of times, that's just a matter of manpower and kind of going out and, and working on it. We also developed a pipe assessment plan. So one of the things that Steve and myself and Lisa discussed at the start of this project was, is it worth going out and camering, you know, putting a CCTV camera down all the pipes out here? And the cost of that is very high. And to try to be efficient and, you know, work within a good budget and be responsible with money, we use some of that pipe criticality information to say, okay, these are your most important pipes, or what appear to be the most important. So those are the ones that you should go check out to make sure there aren't issues within them that would lead to them failing in the near future, because that's stuff that could create huge emergency problems and costs. It does, like I said, doesn't mean the other pipes aren't important, but this is a way of kind of saying, this is where we'll start, or where you could start, and then you can move down to the other ones. There were also 10 capital improvement opportunities identified. Like I said, those are kind of conceptual, they're not ready to go on the ground or anything like that, but they are, we'll look at them in, in just a minute, but it gives us some good ideas of things you could do to improve stormwater in, in this watershed. And then finally, there was a standard operating procedure document, which was created and is kind of tailored to this process. And that is kind of a document that can be used both to guide future efforts, it can also be if, if new staff are hired and they're wanting to know, how's this been done, or how was this information developed, or, you know, why, why were these choices made? That kind of provides that guidance. So I did want to just show kind of an overview of where the, these capital improvement opportunities were located, and the types of things we looked at. And I realize it's a little small from where you guys are sitting, but one thing I hope you notice is it's, it's spread out geographically. We didn't want to just focus on one corner, or one spot, or one neighborhood. Here, we wanted to try to get, you know, some spread of, of opportunities throughout the watershed. It was also important that we not just go with one type of project, because, you know, there's no kind of one size fits all approach. So the areas that are kind of in, in red, or circled in red, are more of neighborhood drainage systems, where you have pipes connected together. And those are situations where we've, we've found that the pipes seem to be undersized, and maybe contributing to road flooding, or even in people's backyards, things like that. These are also older neighborhoods in a lot of cases, and there are pipes that have been laid, and then structures have been built either on top or very close to those pipes, which creates a lot of risk, because if those have to be maintained, it's very hard to access them. If they fail, and it's right adjacent to somebody's house or under their house, that's obviously can have a pretty significant impact on those citizens. We also identified from kind of the stream assessment and stream walk, some areas with pretty severe erosion, or situations where the vegetated kind of buffer around the stream has been removed, or, and that contributes to water getting in there a lot quicker, which contributes to flooding. It also, that vegetation is a way to help remove pollutants from, from getting in the stream, because the, you know, grasses and trees and things will kind of drink up some of that, and prevent it from getting in the water. And then finally, we identified a couple city-owned roads where the stream crosses through a pipe under them. Those pipes are undersized, which is causing, could cause floodwaters to come up and impact some of the, the homes that are right upstream of those culverts. So try to have a variety of, of projects here. And, and then from this project, like I said, one of the big things was trying to, it's, it was a learning process, trying to see what the issues are here, and, you know, so there's some takeaways from this. And really, the number one is knowledge is power. Steve, we, hopefully, the, the community in general, you know, gains a lot of benefit from now knowing where more of this stuff is located, knowing the condition of it, and also knowing maybe where you should go next, or what you should try to look at next. One thing that has, seems to be contributing to increased flows is, is development. And I mean, development is, is something that's happening here, that's, you know, just a fact. And while you guys do have a good stormwater ordinance, and that helps reduce flow from some of the smaller storms, when you get the real big storms, that can overwhelm the kind of local controls that have been put in, and that water gets downstream. And so it's not a question of, like, it, it's a question of how do you handle that flow, because it's going to happen.
Can I ask a question right here? You mentioned the development, but I thought that the regulation was you can't have any greater flow off of property, pre-development, after-development. So what's, so it's basically the same thing, you have a heavy, you have a large event, whether it's developed or not, same runoff?
Well, so that's the case for, and, and these are storms, the way we refer to it as a, a two-year storm and a 10-year storm. And so that's what the regulations are built around. As we're seeing bigger storms beyond that, which the trends are that those types of storms are becoming more frequent, the stormwater controls that are put in, or that are required to be put in, are not required to hold those bigger storms. And so it can overwhelm those and keep moving downstream. That doesn't mean the regulation, because that's pretty normal regulation, and that's good.
But you still would have the same amount of runoff whether it's developed or not?
Once it, I mean, if it's undeveloped, it's not that there wouldn't be any runoff, because there certainly would. But in those bigger storms, there is still an increase, because like I said, the-
Because it comes from a bigger storm?
Yes. Well, bigger storm on developed land is, is going to generate additional runoff. And like I said, it's not that, like, no one would ever develop anything if that was the, and that's why the regulations and the ordinances have been written the way they have, is to focus on the smaller storms. But it's still something that the community as a whole has to reckon with, and this, it's not just you guys, it's everybody. As that flow moves downstream, you can't just have the stormwater ordinance. That's why some of these measures after the fact, some of the downstream things, trying to fix up older systems is important, is to allow your stormwater ordinance to work in kind of in conjunction with these other projects, to make sure you can balance development with protecting your citizens that are already in place, and your areas are already in place. So like I said, that's just one of the things that, that we looked at. We did do kind of a projection of what the floodplain looks like, based on what the development that is there right now looks like. And that's just information for Steve, it's not, it's not regulatory, it's not anything like that. It was just, it's just information, like going back to that knowledge is power sort of thing.
Let me ask you this, and this is kind of my information, and then make sure it gets out in the public. The picture you have on the screen right now, where is that?
I believe that's Acorn Drive, or Acorn Road.
And?
Yep.
Is maybe somebody could-
County Road?
Yep.
It's County Road, and it's, those, those houses aren't in the city, correct?
They're city property. The city, there's, the property does lie that, and the city, that does count, that does count.
Yeah, and, but that house, that is the one that's most likely to be flooded, is not in the city, right? It's our name?
Okay, just- Well, so I have that picture here for a reason, and it's actually this final one, this final point, the external factors. So there are things that are not, as the city of Greer, they're not in your control. So like I said, this stream is flowing into Maple Creek, which then flows down the Tiger River. Lots of portions of that are outside city control, whether it's outside of city limits, whether it's DOT roads, county roads, that are within the city limits, and railroads as well. And one of the things that has come from this, or that we see in the modeling and everything we're seeing, is like, there are some of those DOT roads that, yeah, you could upsize the pipes on, and it would help, but that's out of y'all's control to do, right? Same with, as you get further downstream, some of it's just backup from the river. And that's where just upsizing pipes doesn't fix everything, whether it's the county, whether it's DOT, whether it's the city of Greer. And so that's where trying to bring all these things together and reduce flow where you can, which that's where the stormwater ordinance comes in, and helps reduce some of that flashy, you know, thunderstorm intense flow, so that's helpful. Also, you know, making sure your system's maintained and in good, you know, you're trying to control what you can. But some of these things, especially downstream, in some cases, there, there are things that have to be done, or that could be looked at as far as either, you know, buyout of properties that are going to be flooded, essentially, it doesn't matter what you do. And, and that's, can be something that has, that can be talked about. But like I said, that was just kind of a finding from this, a takeaway, is you kind of control what you can control, but there are things that you don't necessarily have control over. So that, that's why I include this photo, because that is the situation with that particular location. And then finally, the, kind of the next steps that I would see from this, or that, some things that we presented to Steve. So one of the things he's already taken action on, and that is, is very valuable, is addressing those maintenance concerns. Like I said, there's a picture of a, there's supposed to be an opening in the curb there. It's completely covered over with leaves and dirt, nothing's getting in there. The only reason the manhole's open is because the guys out there opened it to look down it, so there's no way for water to get in there. That's at a low point in the road, that's definitely causing some concerns when it, when it rains. So addressing those maintenance concerns is, is an action you can take. Choosing further assessment locations. So like I said, we, we've developed kind of a, the criticality that helps say, here's some pipes that'd be good to go look at, and that would generate more, some more maintenance activities probably. It also may come up with some things that need to be replaced, but that would give you a better sense of the condition that your system's in. And then selecting kind of, well, and also with the further assessment, you know, we looked at this, this particular watershed, because it's, it gives some good opportunity for, potentially for funding of some of these projects, given some of the areas that overlap with, there's things that would score well when it comes to trying to get, get funding. It's also kind of central to Greer, it's got older assets within it, so that was a lot of the reasoning for going to this area. But that doesn't mean, it's definitely not the only area. There's other projects in other areas that could be more attractive than some of the opportunities we've looked at here, or could be more critical. So continuing to assess other basins, other areas, and get a bigger picture of what's going on in Greer is also, would be a good thing to do. And then selecting some of these opportunities that we've identified for further analysis, because like I said, we can't, they're not shovel-ready, they're not construction plans, they're just opportunities that have been identified. And some of those may be adjacent to developments, or to redevelopment opportunities. And so there may be a chance to kind of work with private developers, kind of have that public-private relationship, and, and leverage that to get some improvement for your community, as well as with, with whatever development's going on, so.
Earl, what street does this picture make?
Um, that, I don't, I don't have that right off the top of my head.
Does anybody know from staff if this-
It's, it's in the ci, it's in the city.
Does anybody from staff know if this drain's been unclogged?
Um, I'm pretty sure it has. I've been down that road, so. I can't think of names that you can prove this over, but I'd love to see. Kind of like in Virginia, do you care on that?
Yeah.
I'd love to see.
That sounds-
I'm not in that situation.
Is that Calmer Street?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. I just got to make sure that's street. For down Greer.
But that's it for what I had, and obviously gotten some good feedback already, and happy to take any other questions or comments at this time.
I've got a few questions.
Sure.
Now, I know you, you all did hydraulic analysis. Did we, I'm assuming Maple Creek is a floodplain? Were we able to compare the base flood elevation compared to what we're actually getting? Do anything there, and see if there was a difference? Were we exceeding it?
Right. So that was some of the, because you've got the FEMA base flood elevation, that's the regulatory standard that's been established. So when that's done, sometimes they update the amount of flow that's coming through there, sometimes they don't. What we did as part of our project was update, you know, here's the current stuff that's built out there, and we're going to run, we're going to generate the flow and run that down. And it's just a simulation, it doesn't, doesn't mean it's 100% accurate. So we did that for both the 25-year and the 100-year storm. Of course, the 100-year is the regulatory floodplain, and so that's, that's where that increasing flow comes from. There is, has been an increase in the projected floodplain. But once again, some of that is, is not, I mean, downstream is, is a problem, it's a constriction. So there was a comparison of that done, which, like I said, Steve has. We also extended the model a little bit, because there are some of those tributaries that, they're not part of the regulatory floodplain. Doesn't mean they don't flood, it's just FEMA has a cutoff, where they say it's not worth our, basically, it's not worth our time to go model every little ditch. And, but when we're taking a more detailed look, that's something we can do. So we extended it out, so there's now kind of some information about that, which is actually the, the two culvert replacement kind of locations that were identified. That was areas where that was extended up, and those are areas that our projections are, it's flooding, or it's at risk of flooding. But if somebody just went and looked up on FEMA, they're like, well, I'm out of the floodplain. So that's something that we tried to do, is to add value and add information that can be helpful, and help identify where those, some of those culverts need to be replaced.
Yeah, the only reason I ask, I know some municipalities surrounding us are moving to a higher, you know, like 50-year, 100-year storm, and SE DOT, of course, if you're discharging to a primary or interstate route, there's higher, you know, storm requirements. But, you know, looking at our different drainage basins, should we say, you know, if you're coming into this basin, you have to adhere to a higher storm, so you're not affecting the, you know, the-
Right. And that's certainly where doing, this is just one basin, so we can't say, it's, we can't really rank or, or target certain areas without knowing what's happening in, in other areas. And I will, the, the Tiger River as a whole has a watershed plan, which that is to help try to address some of that downstream, all that water that is being held back. So that's, you know, there is that in place, but yeah, we kind of need more than just one basin to be able to make a good recommendation with that.
Can I ask one other question?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Gus.
Brings it to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bettis. Just a couple things I want to talk to you all real quick about. Obviously, we recognized our folks on the Historic Preservation Board, but May is National Obviously, we recognized our folks on the Historic Preservation Board, but May is National Historic Preservation Month, and we are excited to participate in that, and was thankful to see one of our developers over at the Greer Mill accompany the group up this evening. The other thing is, I do want to congratulate Greer's own Allison Route, Greer CPW. I don't know if you've heard this or not, but Allison was recently named the Make-A-Wish South Carolina Wish Woman of the Year after raising over $13,000 to make a wish through the Trailblaze Challenge. And you know how dedicated she is to all the things that we've got going on in town, but this is just another, just a feather in her cap, not only for her personally, but, and I know she doesn't think about this personally, but for just everything she does for our community. The Greer Farmers Market is Tuesday, May 14th, so tonight, and it'll be every Tuesday through the summer, and food truck rollout is Friday, the 17th. And do also want to say that last week was Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and so we want to give a huge shout-out to our good municipal clerk, Tammy Duncan. After 30 years of work for the city, she's done a great job for us. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
She's a good one. Takes us to all business. Second and final reading of ordinance number 13-2024, ordinance to amend the Greer Unified Development Ordinance.
We have no updates.
You have what?
We have no updates for you.
No updates. All right. So what's listed in that ordinance? Is what we're, what we're voting on?
The changes. Yes, sir, those changes that were brought, yes, sir. That's, that's, that's what y'all are considering tonight, and there is no new or updated information based on your first reading.
So moved. Second. Do we have questions about this? Anyone?
I think this mainly was, we were pulling a lot of stuff out.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
This was primarily removing size of the trees, and replacing certain trees and different things like that. It was just a little, initial language was a little cumbersome.
Yes.
I think it's what we decided, and so these are all just basically the revisions that we agreed to at last meeting.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions? If not, it's done.
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 20-2024, ordinance to change the zoning classification of certain properties owned by Linda Watson located on Kiss Road from RR Rural Residential to HSN Suburban Neighborhood.
We have no updates on this item.
Any questions? Cancelled, hold on, play a motion.
The only thing I might bring up is the young lady that spoke, would you go over maybe with her as to why this was classified as a suburban neighborhood? She seemed to have questions about that, didn't feel like that was correct.
Yes, so this is actually going to be a cluster development, which is suburban neighborhood, and it's suitable for this location. It is directly next to Chestnut Grove, so, and it's also in our suburban neighborhood comprehensive district, so.
Hold on, take a motion.
So moved. Second.
Any other questions?
Let me, I saw, I saw a campaign sign the other day that was, I thought was really good, and it's applicable here, and I know that the speaker who came tonight, she's an oppositionist, so totally understand that, not trying to create an adversarial situation here, but the campaign sign says, "Growth, not sprawl." This, not around here, it's in another county, but I think that we, as a council, that's what we try to do, that's why we do these cluster developments. And I think that it's good for the public to understand that, yeah, this, the reason you're seeing that area down there is it's been identified as a growth area. It's not, whether we said, "Well, not do any more annexations," it does not mean, that that will be developed one way or the other. And what was the, what is the current zoning?
It's rural residential, which is the.
Is that Spartanburg County?
Um, that we, we annexed it in.
Okay.
It was previous, it was Spartanburg County, so it was unzoned.
And that's another thing that we have, that we have to deal with down there, is that property before it was annexed was unzoned, which means anything was available. And, yes, some, some folks that live in areas where they're experiencing development, I mean, it's, you've lived a certain way for so long, but you have to realize that it's your neighbor selling the land. And the land values have gotten, agree with them or not, but they're, they're, it's almost a point where people just cannot turn down these offers. The only thing, and I'm not opposed to preserving property, but not through the government. I think if there's going to be preservation, then groups of people get together and pool their money, and they go out and they identify these lands, and they purchase them, and then they themselves preserve it. You know, zoning is what it is, it's not, it can be a good thing, or it can be a bad thing to some, but growth and not sprawl, I think that's what we, we, we're trying to attempt here. And. That's all.
Originally, when we did the annexation, it was for Charter School, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and I know for that meeting, I think a lot of residents out in the area came for that meeting concerned with the traffic. I know they probably, the grounds, there would probably have been more free space with the Charter School being there, you know, for recreation areas and things like that, but their concern at that time was the traffic. And I believe probably the, the school in time would probably produce more highway traffic, road traffic, whatever, than a residential neighborhood would. So I think that was their concern at that time, was the school traffic. Now, why they decided to switch it, I don't know, unless they just didn't get the funds they needed for the Charter School or whatever, I have no idea. But, and I did ride out that way a couple of weeks ago, and I would say Kiss Road has greatly improved since the last time I was out there.
Has.
Spartanburg County has apparently paved the whole thing, and so it's a lot better ride, and seems a lot more usable than it did in the past, so whether I had anything to do with it or not. Now, as far as the, it's to-be townhomes, is that correct?
Uh, no, single family.
Single family, yeah. And they're, I think, less than 100?
Less than 100.
Yeah. Now, is it set up that they will stick with that? Because I think her concern was it could go over.
Yes, so I, we don't anticipate this growing anymore. The maximum, like, the maximum would be 105, but there are wetlands at the rear of the property on both sides, which limits the amount of development they can have.
So you said the max would be 105?
Y-yes, that's what they had in their traffic studies, so they would not be allowed to exceed that, but typically, if they're only saying like 96 right now, we usually see them lose a few houses off of that, so.
And do we know the builder? I know she had attached papers for.
Um, Pulte.
Pulte back in the area?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, if they're planning on building, I guess they're.
Yes, yes, they are.
Now, will there be sections of Kiss Road that will have to be improved based on our city ordinances?
Um, I believe that Kiss is wide enough, yes, as, as the county widened it, it meets standards, so they will not have to widen it. The adjoining row, which the name escapes me right now, will have to be widened to city standards. Cox, thank you.
So Cox will be widened quick?
It will.
As you all know, this is District 3, I can say Cox Road needs to be widened, that was a big concern from our neighbors in the county, when we were talking about the Charter School project, so, you know, that's the silver lining that comes out of things like this. I know we would all love to see a wooded field across from all of our homes. Unfortunately, that's just, that's not the role of government in my estimation, that's just not reality for this type of area, in my estimation as well. But it's great to see that Cox will be widened, that's needed for sure. I'll say, Ms. Albert, you know, Chestnut Grove is a neighborhood I've spent a lot of time in, and spoke with dozens and dozens and dozens of the folks who I serve. Over the last, call it five years, I've spoke to literally hundreds of people in that area. I think most people understand that the growth is going to come to that area, it's a matter of us being able to shape it as wisely as possible. You know, our speaker tonight was kind enough to share her residential address, I looked it up, you know, house built in 1995, my guess is, you know, that neighborhood looks similar to some of the pictures that we see on the handout shortly before that neighborhood was built out, as, as did all of our neighborhoods. You know, and so this area, you know, everyone that I'm talking to, they understand while there's a lot of trees and beautiful, you know, open areas right now, they understand they're close to 85, they're close to an international airport, they're close to one of the largest employers in the southeast, and they know that, you know, the people who have given their lives to this type of work of planning, that they've seen this growth was coming to this area for decades now, and so that's what we're seeing.
I think back 10 years ago or longer, it was considered going to be the Golden Gate or something.
Golden Gates.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm on the.
They were anticipating, it got off to a very low start, but then, you know, in the last five, 10 years, it has really picked up, yeah.
Chestnut Grove, the folks in Chestnut Grove, who are District 3 residents, they are thrilled that this is what is coming. Not only is it not the Charter School project, but it's not, it's not even apartments, it's not, it's not townhomes, they are thrilled that it's single-family homes that are going to be at their neighbors.
Any other questions? It's done.
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
That takes us to D Business. First item of which is 2024 Accommodations Tax Grant Recommendations. Ken McClury. Please, case.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. On behalf of the Accommodations Tax Committee, I respectfully forward the following recommendations for a tax funds from fiscal year ending in June 30 of 2023. The Accommodations Tax Committee responsibly reviewed all applications submitted and based recommendations on the following criteria. Economic impact to the city's hospitality and accommodation industries, attendance of out-of-town guests outside a 50-mile radius of Greer, culturally enriched in events for our city, and sales and marketing plans to target outside guests. Programming grants has $159,943.86 available to grant to, to respective organizations. The committee recommends that Heritage, Greer Heritage Museum receive $15,000, the Nehemiah Hope Project receive $2,000, Greater Greer Chamber of Commerce receive $37,500, BMW Car Club of America Foundation receive $10,000, Noddy and Natural Foundation receive $5,000, Greer Farmers Market receive $5,615.86. South Carolina Charities, Inc., BMW Charity Program, they waived on rewarding at this time. The City of Greer Parks and Recreation Freedom Blast, $13,878. Greer Parks and Rec Tourism, Greer Christmas Sevens Rugby Tournament receive $8,000. Greer Parks and Rec Day of the Dead received $6,950. The Foothills Philharmonic, the committee chose to waive at this time. Greer Relief Christmas Parade received $2,000. Roundtree Renaissance Festival receives $67,500, which totals the $159,943.86, which is available. For advertising, the committee recommends to reward Partners of Tomorrow, $5,000, Greater Greer Chamber of Commerce, $32,586.71. Greer Parks and Rec, Discover Greer, Advertisement Vacation Ad, $11,000. Greer Cultural Arts, $3,000 for advertising and marketing. The Roundtree, Roundtable Committee Renaissance Festival, $15,000 for advertising. This totals $66,586.71. The committee acknowledged and values all applicants. If the recommendations are approved as outlined, all available funding will be dispersed. We understand that council may have some questions about the recommendations and are willing to accept those at this time.
Hold on, play a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion on second, now questions.
Okay.
This is the Roundtable Committee, why do they always get so much?
This is the community that hosts the Renaissance Festival, which is one of the largest festivals in the Greer city limits, so therefore, more funding is supplied to them.
So we, we give, they're going to give this money to cover their expenses we're putting on?
There is a percentage of which they must show in good faith that they are supplying on their end as well.
You know, it'd be $67,100 and then.
What's the total, $82,500? Do we know what the total budget is?
We do. I didn't bring that at this time, but I do have that information.
A lot more than.
Of course.
Really?
How about the, the Greer Arts and Eats, because when you total, it's 37.5 with what another, 30, they're, what, 70 grand?
Yep.
Now, was that, that was what used to be considered Greer Family Fest.
Correct.
That's correct?
Yes, sir.
And so the Chamber chose to do a copy and paste of what everybody else is doing. And then why did we not fund the?
The Philharmonic and BMW?
Yes, yes.
These are both great organizations, but due to their economic impact in the other areas of hospitality and accommodations, they feel as though the money available can be used better elsewhere.
Okay, well, I disagree with that. I think the foothills, that's, that's very important. I mean, not just, I mean, I understand this is about dollars, but it's also, all, all what we should do should be to enrich our community, not make people, when I say enrich, wealthy, I guess is a better word, not rich. And so with, I, I really think the Foothills Philharmonic, it, that's, that's crucial. We cut the Greer Relief Christmas Parade by 1,000. We cut the Greer Relief Christmas Parade by a thousand. And, and one, that, that Greer Relief, you know, we support them and they, they really support the folks in our community. Uh, it, this is, it's just a hard pill to swallow to see, um, this Greer Arts and Eats because, not saying that people in Greer don't drink, but the Family Fest was a family event and it brought people from all over. Don't know the economic impact, never studied it, but the, the arts and eats, it's more of an adult-oriented, I believe. And, um, I, I, I can't support the way some of these funds have been divvied up.
Ms. McCarty, can you clarify, in talking to a number of the committee members, have we received even more documentation, clarification on the fifty-mile-plus nature of how we're supposed to be thinking of the standard? Does that make sense?
Yes, so we ask all of our participants to show documentation as to how they are collecting evidence that their attendees are fifty miles outside of, outside of Greer radius. Um, and participants have shown that evidence in several different ways. Some take, um, from like credit card use, they take the zip code off the credit card use that was at their event. Or they have, um, volunteers themselves go up to the attendees and ask for their locations to see, um, you know, their exact location and if there are fifty miles radius outs, outside of Greer city limits.
Is it fair to say that that went into some of the recommendations here specifically where the Philharmonic is concerned?
Yes, sir.
So I'll say, I don't mind saying, and you all know, I'm actually on the board of directors of the Phil, Foothills Philharmonic, love the organization, want to help and promote in any way possible, but if that is one of the clear guidelines of fifty miles plus, I completely understand the committee's thinking on that. Um, we'll say, again, I totally understand the feedback about, about the, you know, the switch on, uh, arts and eats from Family Festival. I think it did, I, I agree with you Riley, Mr. Erwood, it left a hole definitely when that did change. I will say, I don't know if you've been to the event, Mr. Erwood, it's not just a sole, solely adult-oriented event. There's actually a whole kids section, uh, at the event. Um, and my understanding is what caught the eye of the committee this year is there's documentation that, that event last year drew folks from twenty-two states across the southeast.
Correct.
And that, that's pretty, that definitely meets the, the goal, regardless of what we'd like to see with the events. I, I would, having been to the event multiple times, I would disagree a bit that it's just a copy and paste. Certainly there's some common elements from food and adult beverages and music and art and visual arts and that kind of thing that are present in other events as well, but it's definitely has its unique character. And again, what we're talking about here is what does an organization or event do to bring people into our community? Um, put people in the beds at our hotels and in the seats of our restaurants and on the, the streets of our downtown and certainly twenty-two states. I mean, that's fitting the bill, you know, only a few years into the new version of this. I will say, I, again, for what it's worth, I agree. I think, I think there's points to, to reevaluate and figure out something to fill that niche that fam, that true Family Fest used to fill. Um, but this definitely isn't the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish and what the guidelines read regarding accommodations taxes. And again, I wish, I love the foothills Philharmonic, but if we are looking at, you know, people being drawn to Greer for an event from fifty, outside of a fifty-mile radius, I mean, there's state law, that, that guides how we allocate these funds in that regard, is that right?
That is a recommendation that the attendees be from fifty miles or plus outside of the radius of the municipality.
Got it.
However, the Turk, who is the governing body of accommodation, of funding, they deem any project that draws an incre, an increase and impacts the hospitality or accommodations industry as a worthy, um, project for funding.
Got it. So hospitality even regionally, like day trip, if people come from
Correct.
surrounding counties to, to a concert. So there may be, what I'm hearing is there may be a case.
There may be.
Okay, fair enough.
So thi- this is what I would, you know, the, the copy and paste, the, you know, I don't, I don't, we need, always need to be different. And of course, it's still a sore spot, a lot of people that the Family Fest has taken away.
Me being one, agreed.
But if this council did an affirmative vote and instructed the city administrator to say, okay, you're going, the chamber is going to host the Greer Arts and Eats, however, there will not be alcohol allowed on public space. He has the authority, that's what this council granted him. Do you think the count, that, that, that it would be such a success? And then, you don't have to answer, I'm just saying, I don't think that it would. I think that it's, um, I.
Ask that one more time.
If this council instructed this city administrator not to approve the application for the serving of alcoholic beverage and selling alcoholic beverages in public space, in public space, sidewalks and streets, things like that, would the, for the arts and eats festival be, one, would the, would the chamber even say, yeah, we're going to do it or without that, or they would cut back or with the number of people? I mean, that, that, that's just what, that's my, I guess.
I would say people aren't coming from twenty-two different states just to buy beer in downtown Greer.
Maybe not, but, but if they, they, they might be in town. One, I don't think people come from twenty-two states to come. They might be from another state. This wasn't a point of destination for the arts and eats, I don't think. Maybe, I, maybe it is, uh, but I, I just, it, it's just hard for me to say.
That data was gathered in real time, at, at, at last year's event.
Sure, but.
Directly asking the folk attendees.
Yeah, no, 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 no. What I'm saying is I don't think they said, oh, Greer Arts and Eats is this day, we're booking a plane trip to Greer. That, that's, that's what I'm saying. I'm just saying that, that I, I, I think that it's important that, um, folks like the Philharmonic get some support.
Based on that clarification from Ms. McCarty, I'd say absolutely, let's figure, let's figure out a way to support that organization. Agree? Because I can, I can tell you from knowing their budget, they can use the help, absolutely.
But they would effectively need it on both sides, right? You know, when you just speed the program in PC, it would also have to be advertising in order, if the goal was to attract people outside of a fifty-mile radius, they would need some type of.
You're talking about the Philharmonic?
Mm-hmm. I mean, unless it could come out of, maybe they budgeted for that in their ask of the, of the twelve thousand, I mean, I'm not sure.
They, I'm, I'm not, I'm not involved in that application for the organization. They asked for it on the programming side, is all I can say.
I think that's more or less just neighbors coming Greer. I mean, I, I doubt very seriously if very many people come out from different states or along the line.
Greenville, Greenville and Spartanburg County.
I think they should, they consider it as a free event for their Greer citizens, then I feel like something should be given to them to support their charity work.
And knowing the constituency of the folks who come to their concerts, as, from, you know, from other places in Greenville and Spartanburg County is absolute, we're bringing people to Greer, they are bringing people to Greer for sure. Not necessarily outside that fifty-mile radius where someone's going to be staying in hotel.
And they're staying locally, yeah.
Absolutely.
Got a question about BMW Charity. What was their reserve on giving them anything?
Um, the city has already accommodated them in other ways, so we feel that the money should be best used funding those that don't have those accommodations.
Okay, and I, I just have a big problem with the Roundtable Community. Last year, they said they were going to go to a two-day event, I think we gave them fifty thousand dollars, and I think the year before that it started out at twenty-five. This year, we're at seventy thousand. I mean, that's just, you know, we, how much are we subsidizing that event at that point? I mean, that's a lot of money. I mean, it's a great event, but at some point, you've got to figure out, do you continue to scale or do you go with, with what your budget can afford?
Correct. Um, like I said, they have to show, um, the twenty-five percent of, um, ma, matching funds, so. According to their budget, they did so, um, last year.
I mean, honestly, with BMW Charities, last year they had the Kids Golf Clinic, which was great, had a great turnout. And I talked to them today, they're making that Kids Golf Clinic even bigger this year. Going to have, uh, it's going to be at Greer Golf, going to have inflatables, the whole nine that they did last year, but even more escalated. They've advertised even earlier this time, I mean, I think it's going to be a great opportunity. Um, I know from an advertising standpoint, they offer commercial slots for the City of Gre, and they do the same thing for the City of Spartanburg and City of Greenville, who pitch in to help them. I mean, from a parks, from a tourism standpoint, it just seems like it makes more sense to give them some level of accommodations tax money as well.
Now, time to make changes if anyone. We have a motion in the section. Yeah, we can change it.
And this is kind of based on the revenue that they bring in? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's based on their budget.
Based on their budget?
On their budget, correct.
And then we make a decision based on, is there any direct guidelines to this council as to how we need to base our decision, um, after we've seen what, what has come before us? Or is it, is, do we have a legal way of saying, well, this benefits us, our citizens more or just as much? Do, do, does that properly think that?
The accommodations committee makes recommendations. The council has the authority to, um, override those recommendations and make any adjustments as they see fit.
I just don't want to make sure, I just want to make sure that we're not.
You're well within your right to make those adjustments.
Well, I would make the adjustment, uh, for the Philharmonic. I don't know what their budget is, and maybe somebody can help me with it, but twelve thousand dollars is, there, there's enough money in there to be, to be moved around and just fund that at one hundred percent.
Ms. McCarty, how much did we give the Philharmonic last year?
Last year? No, we gave them twenty-five hundred.
I mean, I'm willing to offer an amendment myself. Uh, I'd like to make amendment to reduce the Roundtable Community to fifty thousand, give the twenty-five hundred to, uh, like we did last year for Foothill Philharmonics and fifteen thousand to BMW Charities.
Is that reduction coming out of programming and advertising or?
Just, just out of the.
Programming?
The programming.
Okay.
Okay, could you go over that one?
Yeah, will you do that for me again, please?
So basically reduce Roundtable Community to fifty thousand, which is what they got last year, I believe. That creates a difference of
Seventeen five.
Seventeen five. Give twenty-five hundred to Foothills Harmonics, twenty-five hundred like we did last year, and then fifteen thousand, or the difference to BMW Charity, which we gave them twenty last year, I believe.
Fifteen thousand to who?
The charity event, charity golf.
Is that right, Ms. McCarty? We gave twenty to BMW Charity last year?
We did, yes, sir.
But it, it keeps, what, what Mr. Booker has done is the bottom line is remaining the same at, uh, a hundred fifty-nine, nine forty-three, and what he's done is redistributed seventeen five.
Right.
And I left one thing out, I, I want to, uh, the Philharmonic at twelve thousand, taking , uh, twelve from the chamber and then the Greer Relief, an additional thousand, and pulling that thousand from the chamber.
I don't want to say some come from the Roundtable Community, I, I don't see why they get so much. Oh, you did?
Mr. Booker's recommendation of a, Mr. Booker's recommendation of seventeen thousand, five hundred was coming from the Roundtable.
Oh, okay, okay, I didn't know where you were going.
But if I'm, if I'm hearing this, if I'm hearing this correctly, you are requesting thirteen thousand in total
Yes.
to come out of the chamber
Yes.
to go to the Philharmonic and then the remaining thousand to go to the Greer Relief.
Yes.
Now, that's two different.
Hey, yeah, well, hey, what we would need to do is yeah, we would need an emotion to amend. It's not really, he hadn't made a motion yet, so we'll, we'll consolidate it all into one motion.
How much, how much do you want to give, uh, Philharmonic?
Twelve.
Okay, and you go give the twenty-five hundred?
Twelve, if he wants to bump it up to twelve.
Well, if you bump it up to twelve, that would be
I give the twenty-five, I mean.
That would be more than they requested.
Why don't you take that twenty-five hundred, give the extra, give a thousand to the Greer Relief and fifteen hundred to the Heritage Museum?
Hang on, I'm following, hang on, fifteen hundred.
They do a lot of work down at the Heritage Museum, they've done a lot of programs and stuff down there, and I would say they have done an outstanding job on renovating and bringing interesting things into that, and they have little programs play often. But you just always, I know year after year, to me, it just always shocks me at the amount that the Roundtable Community gets.
Speaking about the Heritage Museum, you know, we've funded a good bit of just that, that building, that's our building. And I don't know if we do any, we used to do some staffing in there, I don't know if that's still a thing or not, but, um, you know, I, I, I'm with Riley and I, and I agree with you on the Heritage Museum. It, it, it keeps, um, it, it definitely shows where we've come from.
So where are we at on the numbers now?
This.
I was going to ask.
Okay, so what I'm going to, what I'm going to recommend we do is I'm going to read what I think I heard, and then if y'all are in agreement or you want to further debate, obviously that's your prerogative, but if you are generally in agreement with that, we will do that, consolidate that into one motion. We will ask someone to amend. Who, who made the motion, the original motion? Is that Mr. Hopper? Okay, so Mr. Hopper would then need to amend his motion with these new numbers and then we can carry on with the vote, all right? So this is what I think I hear. We're going to fully fund Greer Heritage Museum at the three thousand dollars. We will reduce Greer Chamber of Commerce Arts and Eats from thirty-seven, five to twenty-six thousand, or reduce them by eleven thousand, five hundred dollars, okay? We are going to add fifteen thousand dollars to South Carolina Charities for the BMW Program. We will fully fund the Foothills Philharmonic, and we will reduce Roundtable Community by seventeen thousand, five hundred. Now, that's what I think I heard, and if there's anybody else in here counting heads. So yes, yeah, so, oh, and then the Greer Relief, excuse me, yes, and that was my other one I missed, um, the Greer Relief would be fully funded at the three thousand dollars.
And the bottom lines remain the same.
The bottom line should remain the same, but let me do some quick math on that. Here we go, this is a Greer Relief. And to be fair, if those numbers work for you, then we can work within those numbers to make sure that it.
Ms. McCarty, can you remind me how much did we fund Arts and Eats for programming last year?
Um, let's see. Ten thousand.
Just make sure I'm not wrong.
I got you, hang on.
Double check your numbers.
This is higher math y'all are asking me to do. 155. Yeah, yeah, that's, uh. Yeah, we're there.
Good there.
Yeah.
You mind reading them off again?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's fine, um, so I'm trying to figure out where that 4,000 went. All right, so Greer Heritage Museum, $3,000, fully funded. Greater Greer Chamber of Commerce is, hang on a minute, that might be where it is.
26, you said?
37,520 minus 25. 26, yes. All right, and then, um, uh, the Pro-Am is at 15,000. You've got 12,000 for the Philharmonic, you have 3,000 for Greer Relief, and we are reducing the Upstate Renaissance Festival Round Table Community to 60,000 dollars, excuse me, 50,000 dollars. Fifty. Wait a minute, I just, Mr. Booker, is that, is that what you needed?
Yeah, I think you're close.
Yeah.
Probably.
Well, the good news is this, we know, I generally understand which way you're going, so we can, um, obviously make the necessary corrections if you have, it, we'll make those corrections, but I understand where we're getting, and all this is on the record anyway, so. So, Mr. Hopper, whatever you want, whatever you want to do.
I will amend my motion to the numbers as discussed, with the comment that I would invite each one of us to attend Arts and Eats this fall, to experience the event, and to invite you to sit down for lunch or coffee, or whatever of your choice with a new president CEO, share what you'd like to see with this event and others. Katie Collins, in the near future.
We got a second.
Ms. Albert.
Ms. Albert, second.
Do you have your second?
I have one other question before we vote.
Okay.
Were there other organizations that aren't even listed here that requested?
No, all the organizations, um, that submitted an application are listed.
Any good, ready? All right, so.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item two is first and final reading of Resolution Number 15 dash 2024, a resolution to accept Overton Park subdivision of streets, namely Booty's Drive, Yoshino Cherry Drive, Hill Park Lane, and Okami Court in the City of Greer street system. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pro-Tep, and Council this evening. Um, this subdivision before you is Overton Park, project was started, construction in 2019. It is located off of Adner Creek, approximately 895 feet from the intersection of Adner Creek and Brockman and, Brockman McLennan Road. Um, it is inside Council District 3. All utilities are installed and the streets are paved. The subdivision is fully built out with 76 lots. Our staff has inspected it, and we believe that it meets the city standards. Therefore, staff recommends Booty's Drive, a length of, um, 248.7 feet, Yoshino Cherry Drive, a length of 127 feet, Hill Park Lane, a length of 311 and a half feet, and Okami Court, a length of 400, excuse me, 4,427 feet, all being accepted into the city's street system for ownership and maintenance by the city.
Any other type of motion?
Still moved. Second.
Very much, and a second. Questions about these streets?
Have I missed something? Was this to your warranty, was that something you, is that what was in?
We've always had a requirement on the streets, yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll say that.
Yes, ma'am, we've always required a warranty on the streets.
I think that's good, because I get concerned sometimes with the new development, it seems like some of the older subdivision streets hold up a lot better than the newer development streets.
Sure. Um, some of that is just more traffic these days, frankly, um.
Just makes stuff better, Matt, I think, that.
I, I, I won't go that far, I, I will say that in more modern times, we're seeing larger vehicles come in more often, whether that be garbage receptacles, or delivery trucks, or whatever it be, Amazons coming to your house a lot more than it used to. Um, that certainly plays a factor in addition to some of the stormwater features that we went over earlier today. Um, but that two-year warranty is mainly, um, in place to go after any kind of quote-unquote installation defects that may pop up rather quickly after, um, we accept them into the city.
Any other questions? Done here?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Item three is the first and final reading of Resolution Number 16 dash 2024, a resolution to accept Creekside Manor, Phase 3 of 3 subdivision streets, namely Fox Bank Circle and Merkel Drive into the City of Greer street system. Can.
Thank you, sir. Um, subdivision, the subdivision is Creekside Manor, this is the third phase of three phases for the project. The project started construction in 2018. It is located off Burns Road, approximately 1,720 feet from the intersection of Burns and Snow Road. It resides in Council District 3. All utilities are in, the streets are paved, and it is fully built out, with the total number of the subdivision being 144 lots built out. Our staff has inspected the construction and believes it meets the city standards, therefore, we recommend, um, the acceptance of the remainder of Fox Bank Circle, which is a length of 1,832.8 feet, and the remainder of Merkel Drive, a length of 547.4 feet, be accepted into the city's street system for ownership and maintenance of the city.
Any other motion?
Still moved. Second.
We've got a motion in the second, any questions? And there are none, Mr. Scott?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
First and final reading of Resolution Number 17 dash 2024, a resolution authorizing city administrator to provide for a one-time CPI adjustment to see payroll for fiscal year 2023, '24, not to exceed 1.5%. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yeah, thank you, um, Mr. Bettis, Council, this is, um, uh, my request to utilize , uh, remaining funds in the personnel budget to, um, actually get ahead of recommended CPI adjustments for the next fiscal year. Um, as you know, inflation has had a, um, an effect on a lot of, on, on all sectors of our economy, clearly, um, but a number of our employees are, um, being negatively impacted by it. Um, so what we are requesting through this resolution is that we go ahead and front-load, um, the requested CPI increase for next fiscal year, do a portion of that this year, uh, for the final quarter of this, this fiscal year, and go ahead and implement that effective, uh, the last quarter of the fiscal year, which would be somewhere around that April 1st timeframe, that payroll. Um, it is a, um, it will have an ongoing fiscal impact of about $250,000 for our payroll moving forward annually.
Any other type of motion?
So.
Second.
So, if you will institute this basically immediately, will there be additional CPI increase on the new budget?
So the, so we, right now, the recommended increase for CPI, and I can't remember, Kenny, if you know, or, or not, Kenny, um, Katrina, if you know off the top of your head what CPI was this year, but it was like 6%, it was 6% uh, for our region. I think this year in the budget, we had a 4% um, CPI with a 1.5% was the recommended merit, but what we're, in lieu of doing that, or asking Council to consider for the next fiscal year, is instead of doing the 5.5%, we just go ahead and do 1.5% now, and then do 4% the next, into the next fiscal year, to keep up with the CPI.
So the answer to my question for the year?
Yes, sir. The answer to your question is yes, sir, just a portion of the CPI would go to this year, not the entirety of it, but a portion of the upcoming CPI.
So, the benchmark that this 1.5 sets will be an additional 4% of both that?
Yes, sir, so if, let's just for giggles say that we didn't do anything today, and I wasn't requesting this, this resolution, and I'm coming to you for first reading the budget on the 28th, what you would have seen on the 28th would be a recommended 5.5% increase. What I'm going to be asking you for is a 4% or thereabouts, and then front-loading the 1.5% for this fiscal year, and we have the capacity in the personnel budget as it exists this year.
And you said the total amount of money that we're talking about, do you?
The total amount is, I'm going to pull that up, it will have a.
This will, and I'm asking for a year.
Yeah, that's right, 200, um, it was, forgive me, I'm going to pull that up. 275,91842, 275,91842.
And our existing payroll, do you know what that is?
We are at 32 million, is that right? Yeah, 32 millions is our existing payroll.
And this, if, would that problems with people?
Well, I.
With employers?
Without getting too far ahead of my skis here on this, this is part of a number of steps that we are going to have to take to address, uh, some ongoing recruitment issues and retention issues, um, on a number of our salaries, especially on the lower end of our, uh, class and comp. Uh, so while, so to answer your question, yes, sir, this is part of it, we have to be, continue to remain competitive to be an employer of choice, not only to recruit, but to retain, and that's where we're going to run into some issues, and quite frankly, uh, we have a very robust, um, benefits package, I mean, there's no arguing how, how much we, uh, look to take care of our employees on the benefits retirement side. Uh, the fact of the matter is that you can't eat your benefits, and I think that's some of the issues that we're running into, and we've got, um, some concerns that we are not meeting, in some positions, the minimum, uh, the, the living wage for Greenville-Spartanburg County. And so, again, if we are in a competitive marketplace for high-quality employees, then we've got to continue to be competitive. So this is step one of multi-steps that we're going to have to consider over the next two fiscal years at least.
You and I have spoken about the whole situation, but I think that it's imperative, um, that, um, you know, the, the, the cost of living, I understand that completely, and you're right, you can't eat your benefits. Um, we've always tried to be, um, we've always tried to have employees, uh, that, that, that are better than other employees in, in other agencies, uh, or other governments that we, I guess, compete with. And I, I want us to be like that, and I think one of the, I think that we have to look at this, the whole, um, employment process from recruiting, we've got, we've got to step out of the box and, and recruit much differently. We need to, um, do things, uh, as far as the employees themselves, retaining them, kind of taking a lesson from some of the very old businesses that used to be around, some of the mills that were family-operated, and when it came Christmas time, you know, they were bringing the kids in and seeing Santa Claus and stuff like that. We've got to love on them more. Um, but, w- as we do this, then we need to make sure that the folks we're bringing in is just not that caliber that could fill the position here or somewhere else, they can only fill it here, because they've got that skill set that we so much desire and we so much require. And then, as Council, and, and then the, the department heads and managers, we have to look at how those folks can do more with the technology that's out there, whether it's, whether it's a computer terminal, or whether it's a tractor, some kind of vehicle. We've got to do all we can to, to bring our mechanization level up in the departments that can be mechanized the most, so we can, we can do the task that we've done for 100 years, but we've been doing it with three folks, and now we can do it with one, but we've got to incorporate a piece of machinery. That's what, and, and it will take, I think, a lot of thought, a lot of input from us, and from, and from the department heads and, and management staff, but it, we, we need to be, if we want to be unique, we have to come up with a unique way to manage this, because it's, it, 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 it will benefit us in the long term, and then when, when we're no longer here, i- at some point, the labor market's going to be exactly like it is now, and they don't, and, and whoever's sitting at this table does not need to have to go back and reinvent the wheel, maybe they can just improve the wheel that we've, that we've come up with.
Mr. Bettis, if I may clarify something, current annual payroll's 18,000, or it's going to be 18,250, so this will increase it, um, by that 275 to 18,523.
It's kind of low.
Yeah, well.
I'm shocked.
No, 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 I, no, 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 well, when I think of an 80 million dollar budget, but yeah, no, we, where is it, 18,250, I don't know where I got the 30.
Anyone have any other, uh, questions or comments regarding this?
You said this is immediate for you?
Yes, sir, so what we would do is, by law, we have to notify employees within seven days of their next pay period of any change, um, to pay, uh, to their paychecks, so we will notify our employees that, um, this will be effective, and you'll have to forgive me the date, I think it would be the first pay period of the, of the last quarter of the fiscal year, on or around the 1st of April, and, uh, so yes, sir, it would be immediate.
And be clear, just so we put it out there, this is for the employees, this doesn't apply to Council.
No, yeah, no, yeah, this is, this is for our employees, yes, sir. Council sets, Council, y'all, just by reminder, you set your salary by ordinance, and so it's, it's different.
We do it by one's.
Yeah, standalone.
Yes, it is standalone, it, it functions separately, unlike, unlike some other agencies.
Everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Scott?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Going to no other business or executive session. We're adjourned.
We'll see y'all.